Good afternoon. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners. Call meeting, 1:00 PM, Tuesday, July 30th, 2024. Again, the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, if I could have everyone to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Again, our meeting with the millage rate, this is a public hearing and adoption. I could have David Smith and Michael Harris are going to present.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners and the Henry County community. Today, Tax Commissioner Harris, who will be up here subsequently, he and I are here today to, for a public hearing for the millage rate as well as the millage rate adoption. I want to provide some highlights on our fiscal year 2025 budget that we actually adopted back in May of this year, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Harris to fully explain the millage rate itself as well as its impact on our property taxpayers. So let's talk about the budget that we adopted. Our general fund and service districts budget is approximately $259.7 million, an increase of 8.7% over the prior year. This is approximately $20.7 million of an increase. The budget itself is supposed to fund the board priorities that are primarily focused on the employees, provide additional funding for future capital needs, including but not limited to, we want to do a new E-911 facility and a fire training facility. It's also to plan for sustainability and accommodate a long-term planning because we do have some future needs that I'll address later. And so, we sent to the tax commissioner a three-mill increase. I'm asking for the board to adopt the three-mill increase for our service districts. What does that three-mill increase request include for the service districts? It's one mill for fire, the fire training facility, equipment, personnel, one mill for the police, primarily for personnel, and one mill for the future capital needs. Future capital needs that we've discussed at several meetings include the judicial complex, which we've touched on for several years now, a jail pod because of the overcrowding that we continue to have there, and a central energy plant to facilitate it. Simply stated, our growth here in Henry County necessitates us planning for the future. You want to know what about the $20 million that I touched on? That additional three mills would generate a projected surplus of $16.9 million. It funds these increases that I've just touched on for fire, police, parks, and the future capital projects. Our current millage rate has remained unchanged since 2016, and the growth itself makes it necessary to plan. It helps us to collect sufficient revenues to maintain services and set aside funding for those future capital project needs and provides for sustainability with our long-term planning. I'm going to bring up the, before I bring up the tax commissioner, if you'll indulge me for a minute, I have something for the Henry County community, the residents and the taxpayers, because I know that there is questions, what am I getting for my taxes? You know, there is a connection between what you pay for and what you get, and so I wanted to, before the tax commissioner comes up, to provide an example of that.
The recent past has seen a great deal of change come to Henry County. Since 2010, population has increased from around 200,000 to now over 250,000 residents. And according to the Council for Quality Growth, by 2050, Henry County will be home to nearly 350,000 people. That level of change means that the local government must scale its amenities, resources, and investments to keep pace and ensure that this remains the best place to live in metro Atlanta. More people means more cars and more traffic on our already crowded streets. That demands major investments in our roads, bridges, trails, and transit. Henry County currently resurfaces nearly 100 roads a year, all while widening and expanding major thoroughfares to keep your commute manageable. Large populations often need to pour crime, but not here. Even though the Henry County Police Department saw a 27% rise in calls last year, crime rates fell in major categories across the board. That's because we are investing in public safety facilities such as new fire stations, police precincts, and our real-time crime center, in technology that grows our video surveillance and gunshot detection capabilities, in equipment that keeps our firefighters safe, and in our people, in competitive pay and training so that we have the most qualified and compassionate personnel in the region. And all these new residents also place a great strain on our park system and senior centers, but that hasn't slowed us down because we always keep quality of life in the forefront. In the past year, major additions and renovations were inflicted at parks and recreation centers across the county, all while our Parks and Recreation Department continues to develop cutting-edge programming so that it is something for everyone. From parks to public safety, streets, senior citizens, it's so much more. Henry County is constantly investing in the present and the future to ensure that growth and change enrich the fabric of our community. That's because Henry County Government cares and is committed to ensure you, everything you need, thrive in this wonderful place we own.
At this time, I'll turn it over to the tax commissioner, but I'll be prepared for questions.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners.
Going to run through quickly what's come to be our annual millage presentation, lots of the same information that we provide every year for yourselves and for the viewing public as well, with a couple of changes, obviously, as Mr. Smith discussed in reference to the change in the millage. What is the millage rate? It's simply the tax rates that are used to calculate our local property taxes. This is, this is the rate that represents the amount a homeowner has to pay for every $1,000 of the assessed value of his property. The assessed value includes both the structure and the land in which it sits. Property values, again, they're broken into two categories, fair market value. This is determined by the tax assessor's office, and they actually do their assessment annually. Tax assessor's office, in late April, May timeframe, they will mail out an assessment notice, which gives them, every resident, a snapshot of what they anticipate, what their new values are for that upcoming year, and also gives an opportunity to appeal if they have any questions or concerns in reference to it, and that appeal goes to the Board of Assessors. Assessed values are calculated simply by taking that fair market value and multiplying it by 40. It's 40% of your fair market value constitutes your assessed value. So calculating the property taxes, this year, obviously, the big change would be the different millage rate at 15.733. The equation stays the exact same, assessed value minus any exemptions that you have, times your millage rate equals your tax amounts due. So we're looking at an example based on a homestead property versus a non-homesteaded property. For homesteaded property, homestead with a property value, fair market value of 300,000, 40% of that would give you a $120,000 assessed value. That minus your basic L1 exemption of 15,000 would give you a taxable value of 105,000. Again, that's simply your assessed value minus any exemptions gives you your taxable value, and that would yield, based on the 15.733 millage rate, a millage rate of, a tax of $1,651.96. That compared to, if it had been the 12.733 mills, it would have been $1,336.96, and again, based on the standard L1 exemption. For a non-homesteaded property with a fair market value of $300,000, again, same process, fair market value times your 40%, give you $120,000 assessed value. With no exemption in place because you do not have your homestead, that would yield a tax of $1,887.96, which would be a difference of about $236, again, between homesteaded versus non-homesteaded. What happens to my taxable if, as is the case this year, property value goes up and millage rate increases by the three mills? So we're looking at a case where property value increases from 300,000 to 360,000, about a 20% increase. Once again, your 360 times your 40% give you $144,000 assessed value, times your millage rate, which would yield a, for a non-homesteaded property, a county tax of $2,265.55, increase of about $929, it's $928, again, for a non-homesteaded property, that's critical to keep in mind. Previously, homesteaded property would be taxed at the same rate for the last year due to the frozen exemption, which I'll talk about in just a second, with an increase of what we anticipate to be about $315, based solely on that three, on that three-mill increase for homesteaded properties. The frozen exemption will not apply, obviously, to school taxes, improvements made at home, or additional land that's been acquired after the, it's been applied. Let me jump back real quick. One of the questions I have received recently was in reference to what would happen for those properties that do not have, do not currently have a school board tax, they're already exempt from the school board. And Jamie, if I could. Okay. So he's going to put it up, but I did want to kind of share with everyone, we did look at that analysis of being able to see, we took a property based on from last year's taxes to this year's taxes, to simply see what would that three-mill increase mean to someone who is, because again, there will be some offset for this year because the school board is reducing their bond millage, but for those that are already exempt from the school millage, what would that look like? So we did. Felt it was important to kind of give this example because we do, we have a number of citizens that are currently exempt from the school board taxes, so we want to give them an idea of what they may be looking at in regards to what that three-mill increase would mean to them, since they will not be benefactors of that reduction from the, from the school bond reduction. So what we're looking at here is a 2023 tax bill, property value was at $239,000. Last year, they had the Homestead Tax Relief Grant program that was in place. That generated an additional credit of $144. That is not in place this year for anyone, seniors, non-señors, anyone, so that would not be in place. So taking that into account, last year, they ended up paying $362. This year, that same property, now valued, the value's gone up $243,000, $43,000, based on the 17.733, as opposed to last year's 14.733 millage, that would yield a tax of about $619. Taking out the consideration for the HTRG, the Homestead Tax Relief Grant, we're looking at an increase on this property of roughly $92, which equates about $7.45 a month. So again, wanted to give you a real-life example of a tax bill and exactly what that impact would look like for one of our senior properties, so just felt that was important. Again, as a question that we've received in our office, I want to be able to provide that information for everyone. Going back, we looked at, again, as I mentioned earlier, we just looked at an historical perspective of total millage rates. Again, this takes into account the school and the water authority rates, and just given the overall millage rate that we've been paying here for over the last seven years. I just went back to 2020, but it actually goes back to 2016, and that year, you'll notice, I think there's somewhere, yeah. The, we just took a snapshot of a home that was valued at $350,000. Assessed value, again, at 40% value is $140,000. Basic exemption, just for that one particular year, be it a minus of $15 for homestead, would give the taxable value of $125,000. Our county millage rate, and you'll see it's been consistent over the last seven-plus years, at 38.361, 38.367, 33.661. This year, taken into account the proposed three-mill increase by the Board of Commissioners, as well as the reduction in the school bond of 1.68, that would yield a overall millage now of 39.733, which, again, for a home valued at $350,000, with just that basic $15,000 exemption, would yield an annual difference of about $171, and a monthly, that equates about $14 a month, give or take. So again, just wanted to show everyone just a side-by-side comparison of what it's looked like over year over year, and what the difference is going to be. While it says three, the overall difference would be about 1.32 mills in totality. Again, the frozen exemption, I've mentioned that a couple of times, enacted by local legislation back in 2004, includes the primary residence and up to five contiguous acres of land. Base year value is the fair market value of your home from the year prior to filing, so if someone were to file for homestead this year, right now, rather, this is beyond the deadline, 2024, whatever the value is in 24, 2024 would become their base year, and it'd be frozen, their county tax would be frozen at this value. That's what we're just saying right now, base year would be 2024. Exemption should automatically be used from year to year so long as the resident continues to occupy the home. People often ask, do I need to come back in and re-renew or reapply? You do not. Once you apply, you're approved, it stays, it runs perpetuity as long as you are, remain, that remains your primary domicile. Homeowner pays tax on the base year for the county and water portion of the tax bill, even if the value increases beyond the base year. So what you'll see is an increase in your exemption amount. If property value decreases below the base year, homeowner would only pay based on the lower evaluation, they wouldn't get penalized for the value going down. We looked at a couple of quick examples that we've done over the years, and just simply, what it does is show the adjusted fair market value of 225, the exemption amount of 44, and your taxable value. So what it reflects is your taxable value stays at 45, rather than the 15,000 for your basic, it's already increased up to 45,000 to give you that offset amount for, to keep your net tax amount the exact same. Same, what we looked at, different example, and again, it just shows how the exemption amount continues to increase year over year to keep your taxable value the same on your county tax. It has no impact, obviously, as you can see, on your school bond or school M&amp;O millage rates. And again, same thing for a 2024 bill. Exemptions that are currently in place, again, the standard L1 exemption, that starts at $15,000. It's a fixed number, but again, as noted, year over year, as your value increases, that will continue to increase over year. We've seen some exemptions in excess of $100,000. Someone bought their home in the year 2015, say, at, and it was valued at 200,000, and now it's valued at 400,000, they are now still being taxed on their city tax at that $200,000 level. So in order to offset that increase in the valuation, the exemption rises. So in some cases, we have seen some exceptionally large exemption amounts to offset that increase in valuation. Again, that only applies on the city tax, on the county tax side, rather, not on the school board side. However, the school board does offer a series of exemptions beginning at age 62. At age 62, it adds an additional, $20,000 is deducted off your assessed amount. Age 65, that increases to 80,000. At age 68, $120,000 is deducted off of your assessed amount, and at age 70, you no longer pay any tax, school taxes at all. Other additional exemptions include disability, veteran, surviving spouse, then you get into some of the issues with assessor's office, conservation in Freeport as well. Our annual pie chart showing where the tax dollars go, as you can see, the lion's share, the school M&amp;O accounts for, that 20 mills accounts for 50% of the current proposed breakdown for our taxes. That coupled with the school bond, which again, has been reduced this year from 3.68 down to two mills, that equates for 5% of your tax bill. Two mills from the water authority equates for another two mills, another 5%, and the remaining 40% will be made up by the county's proposed 15.733 mills. The digest process itself, again, is a very collaborative process involving a number of entities that all work together. The tax assessor's office, it kind of starts there, they go through the process of the digest of, of going through and evaluating all the properties to determine what the value of all of our properties here in the county actually are. That's something that John Self and his team do every, each and every year, and they do a phenomenal job with it. From there, it turns over to our tax commissioner's office, where we go about the process of taking the information provided by the assessor's office, and there's a series of about 70 steps that Lynn Cardigan and her team worked through each and every year to go through as part of the process of perfecting the digest and working through the numbers that are required by the state. And then from there, we work with all the different tax entities, the Board of Education, the Board of Commissioners, the cities of Stockbridge, McDonough, Hampton, and Locust Grove, and finally, the State Department of Revenue for the final approval and authorization to move forward with taxation. The tax digest, again, it's a, simply a listing of assessments and exemptions consisting of real and personal property, timber, mobile homes, motor vehicles, heavy equipment, public utilities. Digest must be approved by the State Department of Revenue before the tax bills can be mailed out, and it's must be, their approval must be received, the bills must be received at least 60 days in advance, so we're always constantly working backwards from that 60-day notice. Our bills are due on November 16th, so we have to make sure that they have, bills have to receive by September 16th, so that's why we have such critical deadlines that we have to meet, that's why we're constantly pushing when it gets to tax season time. As it stands right now, we'll go through this process now, upon approval from the Board of Commissioners, will we reach out to the state and provide all the information to the state, ourselves, and Mr. John Self and his team as well, and we'll have a meeting with the state to get final approval from the state to move forward, once they reviewed our digest information. And again, we look to have our bills mailed out by September 1st with a due date of no longer, no later than November 16th. We're telling everyone this year, with all the challenges that have been existing this year with the postal service, all of the information will be available on our website at henrycountytax.com. If someone gets to the point where they're in that first or second week of September and they have not seen their bill, you can always access the bill on our website at henrycountytax.com, so that's always an option, or give our office a call. This is a quick chart to show in the millage rates of all the entities here, all the taxing authorities here in the county. You see the county-wide millage rate actually decreased this year from set, from 8.055 to 7.042, increase of fire, police, and recreation, and a decrease in the unincorporated, which gives a total county millage of 15.733. At this point, all the cities have adopted their respective millages for the year, and again, that just gives you an idea, breakdown of year over year, what the, what the changes have been. As I said, that should have been 23 millage rates. Slight changes to our tax bill this year, last year, this area included information in reference to the, we have an announcement just to talk about the HTRG, the area that's circled. This year simply talks about a reminder for people that if they sold their property, they need to, what steps they need to take to make sure that they, that they are cleared of the obligation of owing the tax bill. Every year, people sell their homes throughout the course of the year, they'll still receive a tax bill, and they call our office and say, hey, we don't own it anymore, and it kind of walks them through that process, it gives them the steps they need to take to, again, remove the liability from them to the new property owner. That's for the real, and this is for the personal property, same information. The back of the bill, we, again, we started utilizing the back of the bill a couple of years ago to have additional information, a lot of FAQ information, contact information, and just good facts that, that, you know, based on a lot of the questions that we received after receipt of the bills, so we encourage everyone, more often than not, people will call, to turn the bill over. A lot of the information that they're asking for is actually included on the tax bill itself in the very back. Public hearing schedule, again, today was the only public hearing, and I did want to stress, we did have a couple of calls as well, asking why this, the one, you know, for us, as I noted earlier, the general fund millage rate was reduced from 8.055 down to 7.042. That represented a full rollback as the calculations are, take place with the state. Based on that full rollback determination, the law states that only one meeting is required. Anything beyond that certainly is at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners. The people who have called, they said, why did I only require this? I said, not what I require, it's what the state simply requires. In this case, the state only required just the one based on the fact that it was rolling back. It does not take into consideration the special service districts, the additions to the police and fire, and on and on, so we were, we, we handled this process in strict adherence to the, what the law tells us to handle it. So that's why the requirement for the one hearing was what it was. That's all I have, that's my presentation, be happy to address any questions that board members may have.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. This is a public hearing. Any citizens wish to speak on this matter should come forward, state your name, where you reside, and you will have three minutes to address the board. Stephanie, will you set the timer?
Good afternoon, my name's Todd Wentz, and I want to thank Chairwoman Harold and all the commissioners for their time today, also for your service to our county. I know public service often is a thankless job, and I appreciate you guys' investment of time and energy to make Henry County a great place to live, and we hope and pray it will continue to be a good place to live. My wife and I have been residents of Henry County for the last 23 years, and I've had the privilege to serve as the associate pastor at Pinecrest Baptist Church in McDonough, which relocated from Clayton County to Henry County in 2004. For the last 20 years, we have poured our time, talent, and treasure into this county and watched God do some amazing things around us, and as a church moving forward, we will continue to be fully committed to this community. In 2019, we built a brand-new auditorium to be able to minister and reach more people, and have since made significant financial investments and upgrades into facilities to be more effective, to positively impact our county. Our pastor, who's with me today, John Anderson, he's the lead chaplain for Henry County Police, serving the men and women who serve and protect us on a daily basis. He leads Wings for Warriors, which is a nonprofit that helps families of officers injured in the line of duty. We work with DFACS and other county agencies, just schools, public and private, to encourage families in our county. We're blessed each week to get the opportunity to interact with many great, hard-working families in our community, all different walks of life, different races, nationalities, backgrounds, and as I speak to these people, some inside our church and many outside of our church hear us, I hear a similar sentiment. Many are worried and stressed about the increased cost of groceries, gas, school supplies, utilities, and taxes, and it seems they're falling further and further behind financially as the cost of goods and services rise while their incomes remain stagnant. Many of these folks, perhaps even some of you, are having to make hard decisions to cut back and look for creative ways to reduce spending in their home. In 2020, my wife and I sold our home in Kellytown, and in 2022, we bought three acres of land in Locust Grove, built a modest, yet beautiful home, which I GC'd to save some money, and several months ago, when we received the tax, 2024 tax assessment, I was floored, as many of our community were, because I read an amount of $6,224.29, and I certainly had anticipated a higher tax bill, but had no idea I'd be paying over $500 a month for the privilege of living on land I bought in cash. for the privilege of living on land I bought in cash and in addition to my mortgage. And I know the, as was mentioned, the school bond millage rate was recently reduced, but I'd encourage you to resist the temptation to feel like that this is coming at a good time, this increase, because I've done the math, I know for me, it'll increase mine a couple hundred dollars a year. This will also affect people that have fixed incomes in our community as well. And I just ask that you do what many of our hard-working families are having to do, which is look for areas to cut spending, reduce, look for creative ways to find money in the budget, and so I ask you to vote no on increasing the millage rate at this time. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Hi, my name is Brandy, and I've lived in Henry County. I moved here in 2004. I'm very concerned about the increase in the millage rate. My actual mortgage is now, my taxes are now higher than my mortgage, which is quite amazing. When I got my tax bill this year, my tax bill was now $10,000. When I bought my house, I was not anticipating the increase in value, which is fine, but the increase in value of your house based in, in the millage rate, for somebody that just works a local job, it's quite amazing. So, with the increase in millage rate, and the increase, I understand there are more people moving to this county, and I appreciate that. I think the burden on the homeowners is overbearing at this point. There has got to be a way to either add a penny to the gas tax or some other local tax so that the amount of people that are, the extra 150, 200,000 people that are anticipated to come in will pay their fair share. I think it is very unfair for homeowners to bear the burden of all the newcomers, all the apartments, all the townhouses that are coming in, that are renters, that, that we're paying for as homeowners, but they're benefiting. Now, I'm not saying that we shouldn't pay our fair share, that is not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, the homeowners are bearing the burden of this county. From the school rate, when you're building, you know, apartments continuously across the board, everywhere you look, every piece of land now has apartments on it, or whatever you want to call the new apartment type, they have kids that are going to these schools. Those schools have to be paid for, improved, enlarged, you know? The capacity at some of these schools is astronomical, so we know we're going to be building more schools. Why not pass that burden on to the local people that are benefiting versus just the homeowners? So, I'd ask you also to vote no and look for opportunities to raise the taxes or, you know, just spread the, spread the amount of burden that costs to support this community amongst the people that are coming into the community. Thank you.
Pamela Duchenne, I actually live in Hampton. I know you spoke about your digest, but did your digest increase? I don't see that you showed any numbers to see how much your digest went up. And are you getting extra taxes from that, that you possibly don't need to really increase the millage at this time? In Hampton, many of our citizens are complaining about the same things, although we don't live in Henry County proper, but they're all experiencing the same increases in inflation, and they're all in, you know, in dire needs of some sort of relief. As well as the three mills, I saw one of the mills was for police. We don't get police services, so if you're collecting that, are you passing that on to the cities that aren't getting the services that you're charging them for? Thank you.
David Smith, could you come forward, please? I don't know if you had the slide or Commissioner Harris had the slide with regards to the cities. I want everyone to understand that if the cities have their own police department, our increase in the mills does not impact public safety if you live within the city limits of any of our four cities. You pay that to the cities.
That was your slide.
And I know that there was a statement made earlier about commercial, about apartments. Apartments pay a higher tax because it's a commercial property, so they're going to be paying a higher tax. They're, they're not just not paying taxes because it's an apartment complex. And gas tax can only be done at the state level. We cannot cha- charge a gas tax in Henry County. That's done by the, by the state legislature. Can you explain that slide?
Yeah, I can start, and I'm sure Mr. Smith can chime in. Yeah, this slide simply reflects exactly what milli, where millages are applied for each jurisdiction. So, in the case of Hampton, going down second from the bottom, the countywide millage rate is 7.042. Fire services that the county provides to the city of Hampton, a millage of 2.494. Again, police, there is no millage because they don't provide police services there. Recreation, millage of .742, zero for unincorporated, because it's not unincorporated, obviously. For a total SSD millage of, for Hampton residents, of 3.691. That combined with the countywide millage rate totals 10.733, and again, adding to that, the 20 mills for the school M&amp;O, the two mills for the school bond, and the two mills for the water authority, plus the recently adopted city millage of 5.5, yields a total 2024 millage rate of 40.233.
Okay, and the city set their own millage rate, that's correct?
That is correct. And again, I apologize, the 2022, should actually be 2023 millage rates when you're off.
So, I wanted to talk to the creation of the service districts, which was a part of our local auction sales tech. No, it was the discussions that we had with regard to service delivery, and so wherever the cities were providing a particular service, we were unable to, we being the county, should not be charging for those particular services in the city areas, and so we would only charge where we were providing those services, and that's why we set up the special service districts for fire, police, recreation, and unincorporated. And so, where the cities of Stockbridge, McDonough, and Hampton, and Locust Grove have their own police departments, those particular cities do not get charged a millage rate for police services, but they do get charged a millage rate for fire services, even though the city of McDonough does have its own fire department. Because of the service delivery strategy agreement with the city of McDonough, where they are to pay 45%, I think it's 45% of the millage that we, that we charge them, their citizens do pay a portion back to the county for fire services provided in the, in their county. If, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, there were a couple of questions I would like to address that were brought up in the statements. One deals in the area of belt tightening, because I'm always someone, when I'm talking to the vendors, I suggest that they sharpen their pencils and they come back to tighten their belts when they're sending us costs to us, when we're trying to buy, purchase services from them. And so, in the area of belt tightening, I want to touch on the areas of where we changed our health, health services provider, and we also went to self-insurance, which saved us approximately $2 million a year, which helped us in terms of keeping our millage rate the same since 2016. We also reduced our pension contribution by excluding overtime for the fire services going into that contribution, so that saved us another $2 million. And currently, we're going through an audit of several of our services and supplies that we provide, such as phone services, copier services, in an attempt to reduce those amounts, where we're finding areas where we can save money. So, we are, you know, on both sides, you know? Where we're asking for an increase, we're also doing our part in terms of coming up with areas to find where we can reduce expenses or tighten our bill.
Thank you. I, I'd just like to ask all of our men and women in public safety to stand. As this county continues to grow, I mean, I wish, I, I don't know if I could put a door to stop people from moving here. I don't think that I can do that. We can't stop people from developing their land, but we have to offer public safety services. And I am going to make sure that our county is safe and that we're providing the services that are needed, and if that means building more fire station, hiring more firefighters, we're going to do that. If that means putting more officers on the streets to make sure that our crime rates go down, I'm going to continue to do that. So, I would like for people to tell these people that are standing here to get out here and do this job every day, that we don't want to give you the tools to do your job. Thank y'all. I see that. Commissioner Price, do you have anything, any comments or questions?
Yes, I was listening to the public comments, and it was stated that, because residences are, or residents, rather, are struggling because things are increasing for them, and while that is true, and I do understand and can relate, being a resident myself and having to pay higher things as well, that if it's costing us as individuals, again, more, it is also costing the county more when we have to purchase, again, equipment or fuel for vehicles, vehicles parts, or whatever the case may be. Unfortunately, as a county, we don't get that financial break, if you will. It's costing everyone else more, it's also costing us more. Then I wanted to address the statement that kind of allured that this tax should be, I guess, put on the backs of the new residents. I think that the services we offer are not just for new residents, it's also for residents that are here. When we have our public safety, as the chair suggested, our road crews, DOT, different things that this county offers, it's not offering these services just for new residents. These services also being offered to current residents. And so, I just want us to understand, you know, that things, times have changed, things are costing more, not just for individuals and the residents, but it is also costing more for us as a county government. And so, I just want us to keep that, you know, in mind, that I wish, you know, we didn't have to pay any taxes, but, you know, in order to play, we've got to pay, and so it's just the nature of the beast. And I do believe that Henry County is one of the best places to live, and that's why many people are flocking here and wanting to be a part of Henry County and to enjoy this great place like we do. Thank you.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. Just kind of want to piggyback on some of the things that Commissioner Price has stated, but also just, just offer some, some personal insights. So, I know, I know the young lady was talking about, you know, passing costs on to, to the newer residents, and we actually just did that. If you look at our last board meeting, and you notice that we raised impact fees. So, raising impact fees, because I, I heard a couple of comments from some residents that say, oh, well, the developer's just going to pass those costs on to the new homeowners, and, and that, that is actually true. So, those costs will be passed on to the new homeowners, and so now they're actually going to contribute to the roads, contribute to the schools, contribute to the library services, in a, in a manner that is adequate for the residents in Henry County to make sure that we have the requisite infrastructure to take care of our residents, and, and there are already rumblings about things that will be, will be passed along our way. And I do also want to talk about just how costs have increased exponentially. I frequently make, make the reference to you going to the grocery store and seeing how costs have, have changed and have gone up dramatically. That's the same thing we have here in the county. We recently just repaved two neighborhoods in, in my district and District 5, just two neighborhoods, small neighborhoods, and it costs over $1.2 million just to repave the streets. And so, when I tell people, you know, those types of numbers, they're like, you have to be kidding? I'm like, no, the costs that we bear have increased tremendously, especially in the last three to four years, some to the point of doubling or even tripling with the services that we provide for the residents. And, and I, and I do also want to point out, when you talk about public safety, I, and I see a lot of our police and fire sitting in the room right now, there are some places or some times that they're operating without the equipment that they need. I'm not going to really just harp on prior administrations, but it's a fact, and you can, you can ask them yourself, that there are some things that have been kicked down the road in the last 10, 15 years that have come, come to bear and that we're addressing right now, because we want to make sure that we prepare this county for the next 15 to 20 years down the road now. We need to make sure that we have fire engines. When we order a fire engine, it takes about two to three years to get, get that fire engine, it costs a few million dollars each. So, the cost of everything that we're doing to provide services to the resident, residents has gone up tremendously. There is no one up here who takes it lightly about, talking about taxes. We pay taxes too. We pay the same taxes that everybody else in, in this county pays. I don't want to raise taxes because I don't, I don't, I don't want to have to bear the extra costs, but when I sit here and I look at the things that we have to pay for and look at the future of our county, a great place to live, was, once again, is why people are moving here, I want to make sure that our community is prepared. I think that's the, that's what all of the commissioners here, we want to make sure that our community is prepared to handle it. You know, in previous years, we kind of just had development happen without having the requisite infrastructure. We're changing that now. We're making sure that the infrastructure is cap, catching up, and also that it is going to be at a forward-looking level to make sure that 20 years from now, we don't have to play catch-up anymore. We have it already in place so that we can bear it and actually possibly be able to reduce taxes at some point in the future. But, but it's a, it's a very hard decision, but with the information that we are provided every day and just with the cost of everything that we need to make sure that our public safety is funded, to make sure that our roads are paved, to make sure that we're offering the services needed for our residents, we, we have to make a hard decision. So, and I, I do want to thank the school board for, the, the bond costs, because it kind of blunted what we needed to do, but I know I see several of the mayors from the cities in, in this room today, and if you go asking the mayors or the city managers who are here, they're going to tell you that their costs have gone up too. This is not done in a vacuum. This is what we all have to deal with. We all have to make sure that we take care of our citizens and our residents, and, and we are doing belt tightening. There are a lot of things that we're trying to cut out to make sure that we can have the big items that you see every day, to make sure that the roads are paved, to make sure that the potholes are taken care of, to make sure that when you call 911, somebody picks up the phone and they dispatch someone to your house right then, not waiting 10 to 15 minutes like some of the other counties and municipalities in this region where you have to wait a long time. Our public responders, our first responders, they respond immediately, and we want to make sure they, they continue to do that because we want to provide the best services that we can to our residents, so. That's all I had, Chair.
Commissioner Anken?
Thank you, and thank you to all those that did come up and speak. You are heard. I'm going to start off with a question first to David, if you don't mind, please. Can you state again what the county approximate budget is for this upcoming year?
This upcoming year, it's approximately $259.7 million.
And do you happen to know the school anticipated budget for this upcoming year?
Theirs is close to half a billion dollars, they're a little over, I think, three, no, it's close to half a million dollars, whereas they're about $400 million.
Or half a billion?
Half a billion.
Okay. Just want those numbers to be out there for a moment, and think about that and let that resonate. Our county budget's 259 million, school budget's 500 million or half a billion dollars, and yet we're responsible for every citizen within Henry County. I say that to say- I say that to say this, property taxes are my annual investment dollars into our county. My job every day outside of the Board of Commissioners with the families that I serve is to help them pay as little taxes as possible on their investments. So taxes are a very serious matter when it comes to this job here and my livelihood. This past year, I worked with Fire and Rescue, thank you, their class, and also PD. Because one of my greatest responsibilities to this county is y'all's protection and safety. And the reason I trained with Fire Department and have done ride-alongs with PD is I wanted to see firsthand what they go through on a daily basis and then also understand the equipment and the needs that they have to have to take care of us. Other two responsibilities that come to hit here are also fiscal responsibilities and policy responsibilities. All three of these meet at this crossroad every year for us at this meeting for the mil rate. With that, I have said this numerous times, in fact, when I first came on, our greatest blessing in this county for our taxes is also our greatest detriment. And that is the frozen homestead exemption. My encouragement is, if you don't have it, go and get it. But if you could imagine trying to operate a budget at a line, if I could draw this, I know that you've got a flat line of what our collections are, and yet then you have an increasing line of what our expenditures continue to be year over year, even just by inflation. That doesn't even start with the supply and demand needs that we've had, especially over the past two years, with trying to get materials. You see the investments that we're going to have to make. We have to make more investments in Fire. We got to make more investments in our Police Department. With that, we have capital expenses that are coming out. We have the jail, we have the courthouse. These items are far behind where we're supposed to be. So the budget is going to allow us, if we want to consider in the future, for bonding, which is something we're going to have to think about as we move this county forward. Someone mentioned wasted money. As looking through the budget, I will say, there is no wasted money. There may be dollars that some of us don't agree upon, but that's part of this job. But our staff, your staff of the county, does an excellent job to make sure we are not wasting money. When I further look at this for District Three, McDonough City residents, which that's where I happen to live, we only get a 0.001% increase. Our county residents are going to get essentially a 1.372% increase. I tell you again, look at the two budgets, look at what we are required to do as a county versus just the school board and our responsibility. And I will also say this, being here now for going over three years, we are blessed to have, and y'all are blessed to have, whether or not I'm sitting here or not, a current board that is working extremely hard to try and correct some things that have happened in past situations. And those are not easy decisions, and I say thank you for your grace.
Commissioner Robbins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to continue to repeat what my colleagues stated, but everything they've stated is true. Henry County is growing, has grown, and continues to grow. When we look at our cities, being a former council member, our cities are growing. And that's a great thing, right, for our cities to grow? Because we're saying we want the quality of life here at home, and in order to have that, it comes with growth. So with our cities growing, the county is going to have to grow. That means our schools are growing, so when they build the apartments, and I think the resident didn't understand, so when we're talking about the taxes that the chair mentioned, so that means the owner is actually having those taxes, but putting it to those that are the tenants of those apartments. So they are paying their fair share. So we just want to make sure that is clear. But again, we want to say that we're no longer the little small town. And with us growing, it's going to take us to have to really, really make sure that our public safety have exactly what they need. Like the chair mentioned, you have the cities with McDonough, Locust Grove, Hampton, and Stockbridge. The fire services, our Fire Department is here, right? They don't, the cities don't have those apparatuses to put out major fires with apartments that are going up, right? So you're going to have to have the support of Henry County Fire Department. So I'm so proud of those that serve with our public safety because they put their lives on the line for us. They want to make sure that we are safe. And so when we're talking about, we don't want to do this, we don't want to do that when it comes to our taxes, then what are we going to do when they're no longer in place? So we just need to make sure that we factor that in. So if there's a church and the Fire Department is over here putting out apartment fire and the church begins to need support, then what are we going to do if we don't have them in place? So again, we're, you know, past administration, you know, I'm just going to say I appreciate their service, but they just didn't have the vision to where we are now. And we just got to be able to move forward, and I just know with this county, we're going to be able to do that along with our four cities to get where we are or where we need to be. So I thank the cities, the mayors that are here, I see you, and thank you so much. Because by you guys being in attendance, it shows, I want to go back to my tax commissioner, Mr. Harris, because there was one constituent was asking about the digest data. We want to make sure, David, do you have that? Or did you show that? Because our computers were down, me and Commissioner Wilson. So I apologize if that was there, but if not, if you guys can please have a conversation with her and David unless you want to explain the digest on that.
I can address the digest growth question. It's two ways. The first, I'll do the residential digest growth, which is what we base our budget on. Primarily, we budgeted at 4%. The digest growth was about 6.5% or 6 to 6.5%. On the industrial growth, even though we had experienced tremendous growth back in 2022 at 14.7%, it only grew 3.64% in 2023. And so the industrial piece is really what's been carrying us in terms of being able to fund our budget because of the frozen exemption that we have on the residential digest growth.
Okay. Thank you so much. And hopefully, our residents, again, we're here to serve and answer your questions. But like I said, if we're going to grow, we're going to have to grow together and adjust to whatever the needs are in order to get there. So thank you all for coming out and taking the time.
Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you. Thank you all for the, all the commissioners for the comments. So when I was elected in 2016, took office in 17, I think our budget was somewhere around 142, 45 million dollars. We've been blessed with the growth in the revenues coming in for the last eight years. Now we have 259, so we grew up like 14 million dollars a year, right? With that, with that growth, we also grew the public safety. We grew them from, they've had, we have, I went through one salary reset. We've had two class and comp studies, and that's just for the whole county. And we've built three fire stations, and of course, we replaced two thanks to our sparse programs. With that being said, we're going to continue to grow, revenues will continue to come in and grow as well. So I've got a couple of questions about the special service district funding. Currently, where are we at with the public safety for, what is the milage rate for PD and Fire? I've seen the proposed, but what is the current?
Are you asking for the current budget, Commissioner?
Well, just for the SSD, for the special service district, what is the current milage assigned to police and fire?
So I know one of them is, I know one of them is, yes. So Fire, it's 1.791, Police is 2.156.
Repeat the police.
Police is 2.156.
So what kind of revenue does those two bring in now?
In terms of revenue, Commissioner, I don't have that in front of me at the time. I can tell you what the budgets, approximate budgets are for those two particular service districts. I believe Fire is about at 40 million now, is that correct, Chief? And I believe Police is at about 35 million. So what we do with the property taxes that we take in is we try to make certain that we balance those two budgets with the amount of property taxes that we take in.
So with the current milage rate assigned to the special service districts now, they're covering the 75 million dollars worth of...
Currently, the public safety budget makes up a little more than 50% of our budget that we bring in. Yes, sir.
But would the two milage rates assigned to the PD and Fire?
It's not only the milage rates that are assigned to police and fire. There are other revenue streams, specifically for Fire. They receive a portion of the insurance premium tax. They have their own permits or inspection fees that they bring in for Fire. The ambulance billing piece does not belong in the service district, that's for the EMS, which remains over in the general fund. But they have several other sources of revenue for themselves. And then for the Police Department, they also have red speech funds that help with them and their fines and tickets that they also bring in. So it's not, there are several items that help to balance those two budgets.
So currently, though, if their budget is short, we pull money out of the general fund and put into the special service districts to make up the difference now?
That is correct, Commissioner, and that was one of the items that came up during our local option sales tax negotiations where we were told that we are not able to, the general fund was subsidizing the special service districts, and that was the goal for balancing those budgets without having to subsidize it.
So does each special service district have their own account?
That is correct. The special service districts are set up in their own funds. They do not have their own bank account. There's one bank account for them. But they have their own, their special revenue funds that we set up, self-balancing funds.
So it don't go to the general fund, the special service district funding?
No, sir. It all goes into one bank account. I collect it all into one bank account, and then I disburse the funds as needed for their expenditures.
So if there was a...
So there's like a due-to, due-from, from the accounting aspect of it.
So the special service districts, if there's overages of funding, and so what happens if the Fire Chief or Police Chief puts in the budget and there's money left over in their account? Does that money go into a fund balance for the public safety, or where does that money go?
Actually, Commissioner, that's a part behind the reason why I'm proposing the three mil increase so we can create an overage of funding so that, let's say, for the capital needs in Fire, where they need apparatus, it would generate something for them to be able to use to fund it. So they would have their own fund balance as well.
So they, okay, all right. Let's see. I think it's all the questions I have, so. Oh, I do have one more comment. I think I touched, Mr. Harris, he did mention about the ones, the number, I don't think he told us the number, but there's several homeowners that are totally exempt from school tax. And I think that number is about 12,000 total. 12,000 citizens total that's exempt from school tax. Is that close?
That's correct. We look at a tally of those are L9 exemption, this is over 70, 70 and over, and L19.
There's a few others with one of the disability exemptions. So I think the exact number was 11,816, but there may be, they're still going through a series of appeals, John Self in his office, so that could change slightly. But ballpark around 1,200 parcels that are receiving that full Board of Education exemption.
1,200 or 12,000?
12,000, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we have 12,000 residents may be affected by this mil rate increase?
Well, everyone will be infected. Some will be at the three mil, some will be at the reduced, at the offset 1.3, two mils as noted by Commissioner Anglin. So, but those that are exempt from the Board of Education, they would not see the benefit of that school bond reduction. But again, you know, you take that same example of, I think, the property valued at 243,000. If they had the standard L1 exemption, as opposed to a $500 tax bill, the bill would be about 3,300 dollars.
Right.
So that's some of the difference from, so the benefit certainly of not having any taxes is in that case about, equates about 23, 2400 dollars.
So the full impact would go to, with the military increase, the full impact would go to the 12,000 residents?
That's correct.
Yes, okay. So I'm a compromise guy. I like to compromise with why we need to do, or we need to raise the taxes and why we don't need to raise our taxes. So I'm good with a one and a half mil increase for police and fire to continue the service to grow. But we do have those 12,000 residents we have to, we have to consider.
Is that a comment or a question on me, Commissioner?
That was my comment, sir.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. We need to do the adoption of the milage rate. Can I get a motion to pass the three mil milage rate that we have in the resolution? That's every board member should have. Get a motion to approve.
I move to approve the three mil milage rate with the special service districts as outlined in the resolution. Second?
Motion is second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the SPOSS. Keep the county manager to come forward, please. We have a resolution approving, we have three different resolutions for the SPOSS, a resolution approving the project list. So I guess that is our county manager, Ross, Rocky, and Lynn.
Yes. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. Chair Harrell is correct. We do have three resolutions for the board to consider this afternoon. As Chair Harrell has indicated, the first item is going to be a presentation about Mr. Rocky Romero and Lynn Planchon authorizing approval of the project list. Following their presentation, you will hear back from myself regarding the intergovernmental agreement with the cities for the distribution of SPOSS six funds. And then we have a final resolution that will call for the SPOSS six referendum. So at this time, Madam Chair, I'm going to yield to Mr. Romero and Ms. Planchon, who will go through the project list, and then I will come back to present the resolution for the IGA. As a reminder, we'll need to take action on all three items. So at the conclusion of their presentation, you all will act on that, and then I'll come back and continue with the remainder resolutions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. As all you know, we've been meeting about SPOSS six since early this year, January. We have had about 13 meetings. We have had about 13 meetings. Uh, up on the screen, you can see, we have met, our kickoff meeting was here in this, this building, and then after that, we met in each district. After that, we went to every city in the county, met with, with the citizens there as well, and then we finally had a workshop, and also we had a final joint meeting with the city, county and cities here. So through all those meetings, we gather information from citizens, uh, from Commissioners, from ci, uh, city officials as well, and, uh, we have come up with a list. So first of all, we're, we're here to, for the board to approve a six-year program. The current program is SPOSS five, is a five-year program. The six-year program will require an intergovernmental agreement with the cities. We expect to collect $470 million in six years. We're looking at a share of 68% for the county and 32% for the cities. As you can see, here's the distribution for the cities and the county for a total of On the transportation, we're looking at about 67.7%. Each district, we're looking at $43,273,840. Capital projects, 30.3%. Program management, 2%. For a grand total for the county, $319,600,000. We're gonna go down through the list. Lynn Planchon is gonna talk about capital.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Um, I would like to go through our capital projects list that was compiled, uh, largely by our volunteer SPOSS six committee, which we certainly appreciate their volunteering their time and efforts to help compile the list, listen to the public, and I would like to note that everything on this proposed list was part of their recommendation, with the exception of Hidden Valley Senior Center. They had recommended a renovation, and after meeting with the cities and elected officials, it was determined that a replacement was more appropriate. The other item that was not on the list that has been added is the Community Resource Center. Again, that was feedback from the cities and elected officials. The total for capital projects is $96,838,000, with public safety, uh, topping out at the majority of 90, or 39,500,000. I'm not gonna go through every single line item, but, um, the, uh, sorry, the list is a, a good list. With Parks and Recreation, uh, we're, we're pleased with the Parks Master Plan is gonna be coming soon, and so the line item for Parks and Rec will be determined by that comprehensive Parks Master Plan.
Okay, thank you, Lynn.
So next, we're gonna go through the, each district. As Lynn mentioned, a lot of this, a lot of the projects you have seen, there's a few minor changes. Those have come after we met with the committee, that the committee approved the list, and I will go through those minor changes. Most of them have been because of that last meeting we had with this joint meeting with the county and city. District one, as you can see, is kinda bolded, uh, on the resurfacing. You can see, we added East Main Street, Old Highway Three, that's a resurfacing project. Everything else stays the same. For District Two, as you can see, uh, again, it's resurfacing items that were added to the list. Also, resurfacing was already a line item, so it's just, we specify which projects are we gonna be doing, uh, with the cities for resurfacing. It's the Atlanta Road, Hudson Bridge, and Flippin Road for District Two. For District Three, there was no change. Everything stays the same. For District Four, we do have some changes, or additions, I may say, Bridges Road, uh, for, uh, design, and then on the resurfacing, we have Eagles Landing, Hudson Bridge, Flippin, and East Lake Parkway. For District Five, we added Mount Carmel and North Mount Carmel Intersection Improvement, and also intersection improvement for Mount Olive at Chambers Road, and also resurfacing Flippin. As you can see, Flippin is very popular, it's in a multiple, multiple districts. It's a long road, very near. Also, uh, so you can see here, we have included also the projects that we've been, we have selected as a joint project with each city, starting with Stockbridge, as I, as I have mentioned some of those projects before. Uh, also Patrick Henry is included on this one. Here's the list for City McDonough, Locust Grove, and finally Hampton, City Hampton, as I mentioned before. We'll take any questions at this time.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
The district list, there's no parks and rec on any of the district list.
That's correct. The parks are included on your, overall, on your capital. Let me go back. Under your capital project list, you have over $20 million for parks and recs throughout the county.
But not, so we don't know where that money's going yet?
We don't, but as, as you know, we do have a master plan that has been worked up, so those projects are gonna come from there. Any additional questions?
No, I don't have any more questions. I just, people in District One's gonna wanna know if they gonna get an improvement park, they, so how did we, how we let them know that we got some?
What were the master plan?
So we are in the final stages of the master plan, and we are preparing to bring it to the board on August 20th for approval, um, presentation and approval of the master plan. And I can say, within our preliminary, as we're drafting the final draft, um, there is recommendation for a new park in that area on the master plan.
So after we adopt that, can we add those, those projects to each district?
So you don't wanna add them to the project list? Because if we listed as parks, that gives Jonathan the opportunity to do any of those projects, and so because we don't know the actual location, we can't add them. The other issue is, we have to have this ballot language to our Elections Department by August 1st, and so we're not gonna have enough time to be very specific in the parks, but the way that it's listed gives him the opportunity to utilize any of that 20 million that's listed for parks that come out of the recommendations from the Parks Master Plan.
So all districts should know?
Absolutely, because it was a comprehensive Parks Master Plan.
And at the end of the day, it says the million park.
Yes, all of our parks are all-inclusive.
Yeah, I'm good, that's all right.
And, and Madam Chair, if, if it would help to Commissioner Wilson's point, we can add in that language, where it says pickleball courts, new playgrounds, we can add new parks as one of the subject matters under, um, comprehensive park master plan. So if there is a new park, then that would cover that as well.
Okay, we'll put new parks.
Okay, we can modify that.
Thank you. Rocky, can you go to the District Two, go back to District Two, since I have my mayor here, who I serve, the City of Stockbridge, and the, um, city manager? I just wanna say that's on here, a lot of this has been in agreement with the city, so that way the constituents will know, um, for is the city limits. Um, but I also wanna say unincorporated for District Two, I'm excited that we're going to be able to bring that, which really it'll benefit everyone in the county, so let me just say that, um, the replacement of Hidden Valley Senior Center. Um, that is long overdue. Um, I'm just kinda tired of getting calls from my constituents stating they having to go visit our neighbors in Clay County, when we can be right here and at home with our own facilities. So again, this is showing the growth that we have here in Henry County, and able to be able to, um, stay, um, with the others that are, you know, in our neighboring counties. I did put on here, and I wanna just thank, um, Commissioner Lewis, um, for, for this as well, to make sure that, you know, we have sidewalks, um, that are on here, so that way we can look at different areas to make sure that we can, you know, place our sidewalks in those areas. But a lot of resurfacing, those are, those are my main needs for our roads. Um, Rocky knows that I will call and call, the city knows that I will call and call and say, you know, we want to make sure that we're collaborating together, um, to get our roads, because when somebody's on this part of Old Conyers or East Atlanta, from the county to the city, it doesn't matter. So I, I'm thankful to the city for making sure that they're collaborating, uh, with the county on those efforts. So again, I just wanna say that to our constituents, to know that, um, both the county and the cities are working together to make sure our road infrastructure, um, is improved. So that is just what I wanted to say. So thank you, Madam Chair.
My interest is a general thank you to all those that volunteered their time and gave a bit to the SPOSS board, uh, from each district and each appointing. Also, thank you to staff for working with them, working with us, working with the citizens. Uh, thank you to all the city officials who have helped participate in this, and a lot of the hours that have been put into the SPOSS list, which probably after today, those hours will be forgotten about. So I just wanted to make sure I recognized everybody and told them thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I just wanna special thank you to my SPOSS representative Denise Sylvia for District Five. Also, I'm just very excited for all the projects that we have in District Five, very excited that we're gonna, um, be able to collaborate with the City McDonough, the City of Stockbridge, uh, Mayor Vincent, Mayor Tarpley, Tarpley over in City of Hampton, uh, and Mayor Ford, doing a phenomenal job for their residents, and I just wanna say that I'm, I'm very happy to work with them. They are making sure they look out for their residents, and, you know, anytime the county can do its part to collaborate with the cities, I think that is a wonderful thing. So just very excited about all the, the joint projects we have, and very excited to, to bring some projects to District Five that are, that are well-needed. Um, you look at what SPOSS has done for, for the district, uh, we have the Flippin Road Extension, which is about to go in right now. Uh, we have Mill Road, it's, uh, it's about to get wide. We have Jonesboro Road, it's about to get wide. We have a plethora of projects in District Five, because, um, we need it, and we need to do things for our citizens, and I, and I hope and pray that citizens see, you know, all of the good things that SPOSS has done for them. You look at Fire, Fire Stations, uh, Police Stations, uh, the new, uh, Mount Carmel Rec Center that is gonna be completed, uh, way ahead of schedule and under budget. When you look at the Aquatic Center that is under construction right now, SPOSS is working for the district, and SPOSS is working for the county and the city. So just thank you to everybody involved, and, uh, let's make sure we, we get this passed.
Commissioner Price?
I too would like to thank our representative for District Four, Ms. Anfield, who, uh, worked on the SPOSS Committee. Again, this is a good thing, because it provides an opportunity, not only for our residents to contribute, but all the, so those who are spending money and dollars in our communities to also help us, uh, do the things that we need to do. So again, thank you for all the hard work that you've done, um, and I think we have a good, um, resurfacing road project for District Four as well. So thank you all so much.
Awesome. Uh, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the project list.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
So Madam Chair, just one clarification, we're going to approve the project list with that slight amendment to add new parks to the language.
Alright.
Thank you.
Stephanie, you got that? Okay.
And Madam Chair, can I just say one thing? I just wanna also just say that if you notice, a lot of shared projects are with Two, Four, and Five, so we're making sure that we get it done. So thank you, Rocky. Thank you, Rocky. Thank you, Rocky.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the cities for distribution of SPOSS six proceeds. Uh, county manager and Rocky.
So good evening again, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Um, now that the board has approved the SPOSS project list, the next order for the board is to approve and allow for us to transmit to the cities the intergovernmental agreement for the use and distribution of proceeds from the 2025 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, um, for our capital outlay projects. And so it is a very lengthy document with a lot of legal jargon, and so I want to just be very specific in terms of what the IGA calls for and what we will be asking the board to vote on. Um, as Mr. Romero and Ms. Planchon mentioned, the collections will begin on next April 2025 and run through March 31st, 2031, which is a six-year program. Um, Option One is the option that we are presenting to the board for consideration, and for those board members that were present and/or received the package of information, Option One is what was presented to the cities during the joint meeting on June 27th. Option One included a distribution amount of 68% for unincorporated Henry and 32% for the four municipalities. The numbers and distributions are based on the 2020 census and will result in $470 million in collections. There will be no Level Two projects listed in the IGA, as in Option One, there were no Level Two projects listed. The IGA also has language, or does not include language, that will bond any projects for the cities, and so that is not included in this IGA, but it, there is language which allows the county to bond up to $100 million for the county projects, if we so see fit to do that. And so at this time, Madam Chair, I will yield for any comments or questions that you all may have. Um, I will say that the IGA has been transmitted to the cities, I believe, on two occasions by our county attorney. Our county staff did review it and make some clarity changes within the document, um, based on just conversations that we had with, with some city representatives regarding their desires. But as of today, the county has not received any resolution specifically approved by any of the cities outside of, I believe I received one from the City of Hampton on yesterday, in which they were looking to take action on a resolution, um, similar with the exception of bonding, um, for the county. And I believe the mayor did provide some clarification, that I believe I understand that the cities will do their own bonding outside of the county. And so, um, hopefully I am correct on that. If not, I will certainly, um, make sure I clarify. But the IGA as prepared for the board, um, includes all of the projects that were listed by Mr. Romero and Ms. Planchon, the dollar amount, and outlines how the distribution and the financing will occur. So at this time, I will pause. Um, if you have any specific finance questions, we do have David Smith here and our financial advisor Courtney Rogers, Rogers, who's with Davenport.
Okay, um, alright then, so, um, any questions from the board? Okay, can I get a motion to approve? A motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Next is to discuss a resolution calling for a SPOSS six referendum.
So the final resolution, Chair, is the final action that is required by the board. It is a resolution calling for an election to reimpose a county's special purpose local option sales tax. The resolution lists the reimposition of SPOSS, which outlines our county projects and the municipal projects specifically, um, what we believe to be the projects that will, the cities will be conducting, and the dollar amounts. The actual resolution also includes general obligation debt, should the county elect to utilize debt as an option. And so at this point, I just need for the board to approve this resolution calling for an election to reimpose the county's special purpose local option sales tax.
Okay, can I get a motion from the board?
I move to approve, um, the referendum for a special purpose local option sales tax.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Our, um, next, um, upcoming meetings is August 6th, regular scheduled board meeting at 9:00 AM, and August 20th, regular scheduled board meeting at 6:30 PM. Meeting is adjourned.[1799.41] Meeting is adjourned.